For February 6, 2017, let us rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seated. Let us pray. Dear God of the universe, we gather humbly, feeling the vastness of thy creation and yet the smallness of its building blocks. And through it all, thy hand has gifted us responsibility to build our tomorrows, lead our town in ways pleasing to thy sight. Give us wisdom as we deliberate this evening in skilled ears, patient hearts. For this we pray, amen. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as distributed by our city clerk, Carla Guyer?
Move approval of the agenda?
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, council discussion. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no becomes our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the January 9, 14, 16, and 23 minutes? Second please.
One additional one to approve, the 28th.
Did I miss one? And 28th, thank you, you have good eyes.
Move approval.
Second?
I'll second.
It's motion seconded on the all five, all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, minutes are approved. We welcome back our guest councilperson for February. I say back because he was with us on Saturday in our budget session, which lasted a long time, and we thank you for having the strength to come back here on a Monday night. Just two days ago that we met. But Ron will be with us all of February. And if you have any lead-in comments, you're welcome to speak them at this time or...
Well, I'm simply pleased and grateful for the opportunity of being here and sitting with the city council this time. Forty-nine years ago, I was a member of the city council. And hardly seems possible that I'm still going. But I love this community, I love Waverly. I have been impressed over the years with the leadership. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, and I'm just so pleased to be able to play a little part in the life and future of Wortburg, I'm sorry, Wortburg, of Waverly.
For any Wortburg people, they...
It used to be Wortburg too, in the future of Waverly, so thank you.
Ron has a long leader, many years of leadership at Wortburg College and has been obviously one of our outstanding citizens. Good to have you with us. One just note of procedure here. I know that the dead spot for hearing is right there. Gets better as we go this way. The audience hears off the amp pretty good. But for those of us on council, if we can speak clearly enough so that it reaches Ron, that'd be a great help. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to sell a city-owned property within Ridgewood Park that is adjacent to 1209 Fifth Street Northwest to the adjacent South property owner. City clerk, do we have any written comments on this one?
We do not, your honor.
We have no written comments. I would invite public comments at this time. Anyone who has a comment on the sale, the selling of this property, please come forward. The owner will make a move.
Good evening again, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak a little bit about this. My name is Troy Toma. I am the owner in question of the property south of what the proposed purchase property would be. I just wanted to be here again this evening to thank you for the consideration for this property. For those of you who weren't here at the first meeting back in January, just to give you a little background on what my wife and I intend to do with this property. We purchased the home 1209 just over two years ago, and we're excited at the opportunity to possibly purchase the rest of that land that goes to the river's edge. We have four young boys who enjoy playing out there, enjoy the water. We're looking for safe access to the water. This is, I guess, our pursuit of the American dream, trying to carve out our little niche in this community. And I echo the guest council members' remarks tonight that we love this community also and have felt at home from day one. We'd like to stay here for a very long time. We're very excited at the opportunity to pursue our purchase of this land and continue to upkeep it and enjoy it for many years to come. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Troy. Other public comments. Hearing none, I close the hearing. A formal motion would be in order.
Just maybe a procedural question. If I understand correctly or remember correctly, this did not come out of planning and zoning with a supportive motion, which means it would take a vote of five to two for it to pass, supermajority?
This is a subdivision request, like a parceled subdivision request to the planning and zoning. And when you have a subdivision request, it's not the same as a rezoning request. The specific language of the code of the ordinance that says that there's a supermajority necessary is when it's a rezoning. And so I think there was some misreading of that at the time and Ben apologizes for that. But that's the difference between making a recommendation based on a subdivision request and one that's a rezoning. In this situation, this should only require a majority vote. And actually, a majority voted the seven, so it's actually a four, as we've always done before with sales.
So Bill, you're saying that the last sentence in the summary statement is an error, does not actually require a supermajority?
That is, that is right, it is an error.
Again, with three being, three council members being absent tonight, I just wondered if it's fair to go forward with this. If it's on the agenda, I guess we have to, so. I move Resolution 1708 authorizing the sale of public property, parcel I adjacent to 1209 Fifth Street Northwest as specified in the minor subdivision plot currently within Ridgewood Park to the adjacent South property owner.
Second please. Motion and second, council discussion. Reminder, it will take a unanimous vote here to pass.
Could I say a few words too, please? This came to Leisure Services Commission as just a discussion item at the end of last year. They formally recommended this purchase at their January meeting, I think it was. And then it went to P&amp;Z where it did not pass. And Hank's here if he wants to say what P&amp;Z was thinking about. What we are looking at is a piece of property that the current property owners is maintaining and mowing because basically Ridgewood Park is a no-mow park. So we, it's a low maintenance. Basically, we mow a trail to the river and a circuit around the outside so if someone want to walk around it, they could do that. It still floods just about every year, and this property will too. This is, this would be the third piece of this park that we've actually sold. There's one on the north side, there's one on the south side that we've previously approved and sold. Potentially, we would be looking at a DNR permission and Army Corps of Engineers permission to put another kayak access in the park using these funds. So we're looking at that. We've not gotten any approvals or anything like that from the DNR or the Corps of Engineers regarding doing something to a riverbank or to the river. But that's something we were kind of thinking of.
Thank you. I think the, just for clarity to the public, this went first to Leisure Services, then to planning and zoning, which weighed all this. We have the chair, planning and zoning, Mr. Bagelmann. Would you be willing to bring up, bring us up to date as we reflect on this?
Hank Bagelmann, I chair Planning and Zoning Commission. We received the petition at the January meeting of the, of the commission. There was a pretty good discussion about it, but some of the premises that we went into the discussion with simply don't bear out. This is not a change in zoning. It is, it is a consideration of a sale of a part of a unit. There's no change in that, so it doesn't necessarily belong in planning and zoning in the first place. We didn't recognize it. We spent a good hour talking about it. We do have a couple of thoughts, however. One of the things we noticed was that the parcel is extended to the north, only to the river's edge. The river is a moving target. Many properties in that area extend the property line out into the river. That protects the owner so that if there is a change in the, in the pattern of the river, that can be, that can be accommodated. The idea of putting an access, we discovered, doesn't exist for boating or for launching because the contiguous properties to the east, and there's three parcels there that were added to the property at 1209. Those properties are directly on the place of the middle of Fifth Street. That's the boundary line. And all of those, those three parcels block Fifth Street access to the property. The property that the current owners at 1210 have occupy the other half of that. So there is no access and there is no easement that's registered for that property. So to use it for a launching facility would require probably some, some change in the arrangements that were made with the previous purchases that happened there. I doubt that you're going to want to put an easement on the property at 1210. However, if you go down at, I believe it's Greenridge Road, there's a covesack there, and that could be a point of putting in a boat-launching area on there. Other than that, I think we had a good discussion, we learned a lot. And, but the supermajority clearly is not required in this instance, and we wish you well.
Any questions?
Hank, what you just described in terms of the access, you're talking about access for the city to, or a place for the city to provide some kind of river access would only be available from the park, from, from Green, Green, Green something, whatever it is, what is it called?
Greenfield.
Greenfield. Greenfield. You, okay.
Yeah, there is no access from Fifth Street. That's, that's all, that's all private property now and has been for probably, what, three, four, or five years.
So to do what TAB is wanting to do would only be possible from, from Greenfield?
Yeah, and that's what we had in mind. I had no intention of going from Fifth Street.
So I think it simplifies the thing. We still think that it's a good idea to think about moving that boundary, though, beyond just the edge of the river, into the river some distance. As it is now, there's also a hollow space in the river that belongs to the city. But there's no land except probably, well, depending on the river condition, three to five feet down.
So Bill, what would be required to do that?
I don't know what the, where the property line was before. If it's in the center of the river, you'd have to describe it to the center. And you'd have to go from the bank at a perpendicular to the center of the river in order to make it attached to that property. It's, it's really a common thing, though, to do things to the high watermark when it comes to parcels like this, especially if the city owns the adjoining property. I guess it could have been done either way, but I don't think it matters a whole lot. In the long run, the bank, if it moves, would probably, the law would probably say it should move with it since it was, it was measured by the high watermark. And if, if that were the case, I don't think anybody's going to try to, if it moved away, they would take that space in between, but. And it's, and it does have to be controlled by DNR as far as the changing the bank, improving the bank, which is sort of why with, with resources like this, the city might be able to put this together with some other money and actually put an improved access from Greenfield, where there is in fact a parking area that people could launch and use. And that's about the best access we have for that park is it's, with its, the nature of the park flooding and being no-mow, it really doesn't serve as much purpose as just being at, at the bank to fish or getting up and getting in the water.
We frequently use the term "the middle of the river." There is no such thing between Horton Road Bridge and the city line. Those, those property boundaries are all over the place. Some of them extend all the way across the river onto land that most people don't even know, which is fine. But there's no, there's no rule on it. It's just to protect this owner, you might want to add a couple of feet, and it's not going to make a difference in the, in the use or anything, but it gives him a little bit of protection.
And, and then procedurally, just to clarify, you're saying that it probably shouldn't have even gone to planning and zoning? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't believe, it might, might have been as an information item, but there was nothing for us to decide.
Okay.
I think sometimes what we do is when we do simple, a simple lot survey, like a carbon of one lot, it's called a minor subdivision. And staff has tended to approve those most often. If there's a particular situation where it might be controversial and need some input from the commission, that's why it would go. And so that's why that may have been taken in front of the commission just for that feedback on the parcel being created.
And that, that does happen periodically. The three parcels that are contiguous to the Gash property, which is the 1209 property, I don't believe we saw any of those.
So TAB, just to be clear, you are saying that you do not see the sale of this property to be likely to diminish the value of the part?
If anything, we could use the money to improve the park.
There's a fair bit of fishing that goes on down there that you've probably noticed too. I mean, just individuals. So they would then have, not, not as far as where you are? Okay. It's down by us.
I wonder if, so, sorry, Dave Resident Check's on the phone here. I'm sorry, whenever there's a good time, I'm having a hard time. The voices on the video don't match the audio, so I'm having a hard time keeping up. So I don't want to just talk over someone. So if there's an appropriate time where I can talk in...
It's fine, go ahead, David. Fine, go ahead. You want to say?
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you. So I, as I, I watched the planning and zoning meeting, and it was quite a, quite a discussion. And, and so what, I guess my take on this is, is I would probably, since there isn't a policy, I would probably follow a precedent. So there is one other landowner that they granted this to. So I would, in my mind, I would probably, not probably, I would follow that precedent since we gave it to one. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that we could say no to the next. Also, I would, I would really like to support the Leisure Services Commission in their discussion and supporting this. And also, I know there's been quite a bit of discussion that we've had of a park area that is probably not necessarily usable, that they've been looking for these opportunities for. This is a perfect one, that's a very small piece of land that's primarily underwater a lot of the time. It's not usable, and we've got a landowner that, that could basically take it and maintain it. But also, it would go on a tax roll. And so I would be in support of this 100%. So just as I said, because of the precedent that has been set in the past, that it's basically unusable parkland because it's underwater. There's been some discussion, I'm having a hard time hearing the discussion, of maybe that'd be an area to put kayaks in. I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but we do quite a bit of kayaking, and that's not an area that, that we would go to because it's way out of the way. Nothing else, we would drive down into the driveway area there and go straight to the river. So this, this would be way out of the way for some, maybe misunderstood, but this would be way out of the way for doing something like that. So I appreciate the Toma family coming forward, and I would definitely support it for all these reasons.
Thank you, David. Hank?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. What is the precedent that's being referred to?
Just that we, that we granted, granted it to another landowner, and I would, I would do the same for this.
We're talking about the council did.
The council.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And actually, it's been two pieces of property before this.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess I would, I was only aware of one.
I show three.
And I see, Hank, I see your point too of...
This will be the third one.
Where, where to put that boundary and so forth. I think that's probably maybe a detail that can be worked out. As I look at Beacon, the other properties along there, all are on a straight line, and they go to the center of the river. Maybe that's something to consider. I can see that would be a kind of a stumbling block for the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss. So that might be another thing to work out.
Thank you, David. Other discussion?
Again, just a little background here. I think the property owners have followed a good process here. They contacted me oh, nine, 10 months ago with an idea and kind of directed them to TAB to work through Leisure Services. And so again, I think they've learned to work with the city as best they can, and it can be kind of a start and stop process. But again, for me, I think they're going to be good stewards of the land, and it seems like a good match with the surrounding property owners and the way they've addressed it. So I would, I'm certainly going to vote in favor of it.
Hank, any last words? Nope?
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you, good. For TAB, on the way in?
I agree with what's been said. I think it's established that it makes sense. He has the useful word.
And I think we're ready for roll call vote, please.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
That was short. Unanimously approved, Resolution 17-08. This time, I will entertain any comments by the public on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comments on anything not on tonight's agenda that you'd like to bring before the council.
Mary Sheldroth, Southeast Waverly, representing residents for repair. Just a brief comment to say that we are looking forward to the bid letting tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Our understanding is that there has been good interest in the project with some seeking contacting for more clarification. So their bids are as accurate as possible. We're thinking there will be good competitive bids at or below the 2.7, which I believe is the general number we're seeking at this point. Assuming the bids are coming in, as we are certainly expecting, at or even below the budgeted amount our administrator has indicated we can reasonably handle. We are counting on the council to follow through with the Democratic vote taken one year ago. So we do thank you in advance for your foresight in preserving not only our important part of our city's heritage, but also the integrity of the neighborhood in our historical southeast old original quadrant of the city. Keeping the present bridge safely open for one-lane vehicle traffic benefits the entire city, and we believe it is indeed a win-win for all. Thank you very much.
Other public comments on any items not on tonight's agenda. Hearing none. We move to our consent calendar. We have 10 items on tonight's consent calendar. They are pay requests from Stanley Consultants for dry-run work. We have a request from Global Appraisal Services for the airport land acquisition. Benchmark Agribusiness has a bill to be paid for their airport runway... Benchmark Agribusiness has a bill to be paid for their airport runway extension work. Baker Concrete has worked, has done work on the golf course pond and needs to be paid. VJ Engineering has a bill for the Cedar Lane reconstruction. InterCog, our regional government, has a comprehensive plan review that we need to pay for. U.S. Geological Survey has River Gage operation that's to keep our dam straight. They have a bill to pay liquor license, uh, for the Mexican Grill. Wine permit for wild carrot, a wine permit and beer permit both for Quick Star. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Oppose with no. Unanimously passed. Regular business item number one is resolved to establish fair market value of the Klan properties as part of the airport safety zone project. City Administrator, maybe some comments would be in order on this one?
Uh, yes, sir. We've been, uh, working with a couple of property owners to finish the safety zone requirements around the airport. Uh, fair market value is already established from the other property. This will accommodate the same thing for the Klan properties you mentioned. Um, in order to move forward with any further negotiations, we do need to set the fair market value as is proposed tonight in the resolution. And so that is the purpose of what's in front of you tonight.
Thank you. Formal motion would be in order.
I'll move Resolution seventeen oh nine, a resolution establishing fair market value for the acquisition of interest in certain real property for the Waverly Airport Safety Zone Expansion Project.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion.
Public, want to just make note that when we're referring to the Klan, we're talking about the name of the, the family group, the estate.
Miller, the Miller family.
Yeah, the Miller families. Thank you. Public input on this. Roll call vote, please.
Cengis.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein. Yes.
Uh, Resolution seventeen dash oh nine is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is to approve our city's economic development assistance strategy per the request of the Economic Develop, Development Commission. City Administrator, any lead-in comments on this?
Uh, just that it's been going on for, uh, quite a while. I've been working on some, um, updates to the current incentive plan the city has. Economic Development has reviewed it a couple of times already and has recommended it to council. Um, I'll have a bill worker kind of help work a great deal on this and draft this to explain it further for you, but that is the gist of what we're trying to get through is some additional incentive, something to lock down that we have going forward when we're entertaining prospective clients to build or relocate. So.
Sure. And if you'll notice, and I know some of you have seen this before because we've had it on a study session before and, and, uh, it's, what, what our intent was is to actually, um, outline in the strategy, the kinds of things that we value when we're looking at financial assistance. So when we look at that, we're, we created eight standards, uh, creation of jobs, um, property development, um, the project of, uh, achieve public purposes, um, redevelopment of underutilized blighted properties, uh, residential projects that address housing needs as identified by studies, um, the fact that developer equity is equal to or greater than the public financing requested, um, that we get some high architectural and site design, uh, high quality, and then offer energy efficient and sustainable features. So those are the things that we look for in good development and that should, um, make us want to either support it more or even provide more incentive if those things are met or a number of those things are met. On the other hand, in, in the previous one, we actually put in a chart of, of numbers that talked about full-time job equivalents and incremental increases in value and then came up with some percentages. Um, that was a good guideline. It was always a, a way of kind of measuring where you were. We feel that's still a good idea, but we didn't want to tie ourselves into, um, if somebody looked at it and said, hey, I'm in this category right here, I should get this. We think that's a discussion item, given the fact that we are looking for just more than just jobs or just property tax development. And so what we'd like to do is really focus on the, the wording that we used and I took that from, and, and borrowed that from some other cities who had done the same kind of thing, that were trying to provide, um, the kinds of things that we were really, really looking for in order to give incentives. On the other hand, we do think it's very beneficial to have a, a document that we, we refer to and that we go back to from time to time and maybe even make changes to over the years so that we're not tied to one thing until we have to change it because the numbers are, are wrong or they don't work anymore. So we did come up with that, that sheet that's in front of you that is the, the kind of guidelines that we will follow, um, in, in evaluating different requests for incentives. It follows sort of the same method by looking at jobs on the left and, um, column and on the top column would be the amount of, um, property tax valuation that's added by the project. And we came up with some percentages which, um, I've kind of, we've highlighted and read. Um, and it, it's kind of nice that we have a project that we're working on right now with CMI coming to town, that, that we are going through this process right now as we speak and we've been using this chart. Now, the other benefit we get from that whole thing is that we are kind of waiting for the IO Economic Development Authority to determine how or if they will give incentives for the CMI project. And when they do that, they have a statewide measure that they sort of evaluate the same way and then they ask the state, the, the city that's, that's sponsoring or the county that's sponsoring that, that application to also make some contribution to the incentives to match what the state is doing. So we, what we're finding during our, our discussions in the last couple of weeks and you'll find in the next couple of weeks when we present a proposal to the, to the, uh, council is that, um, their numbers came up pretty close to our numbers in, in terms of percentages and those kinds of things. So we're, we feel like it, it will be able to really prove that when we get to that point where we actually have the numbers. But it, it actually does come in pretty close to that when you, um, use the same evaluation. So we think, at least in the first example that we've used, um, that it, it is coming in pretty close to that percentage. And in, in that case, CMI is going to be adding over 30 jobs and they will be contrib, or increasing in value over 500,000. So we looked at that column down at the bottom on that first column and that's where we get to that percentage. And that's pretty close. That's almost exactly what the state was asking, is telling us that they are proposing to do. Now, we don't know what the final numbers are yet and we'll bring those when we have those final numbers from the state, but, so we think so far this is a really good tool to use to make sure we're in the right ballpark. It gives us a, a place to start. If you look at those eight factors and you think all eight of them apply, then you might want to be more generous with your incentives because you're sort of contributing to the factors that are being, um, that are being, uh, taken advantage of by the developer, especially when it comes to green development or, uh, sustainable development, that kind of things. Those things are all often expensive and there may be times when we want to increase incentives based upon the fact that somebody's doing above and beyond, um, the basic things that they, they should be doing. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have about specific parts of the policy, the strati, the strategy.
Bill, help me with, with the acronym, N-I-I-V.
Um, net incremental increase in valuation.
Thank you.
And then if I understand what we're, we're, we're being asked to take action, um, on what was in our packet and what you've put in front of us right before the meeting today is kind of an internal working document?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I wanted to give it to you so you knew what kind of thing we were working with and what kind of numbers we were working with, so that if you had any questions about that. Because like I said, the prior, the prior strategy posted our chart.
Mm-hmm.
And what that kind of resulted in is expectations from developers that they would automatically get something. And there may be situations where that isn't possible or it's not possible to do this.
Or it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense. And so, um, we'd like to reserve our right to, to use that as a guide and, and we'll tell you when we're using that as a guide and why it is, is, uh, consistent with this chart or not consistent with that chart.
Let's, this is leading up to a motion that we can discuss again. Formal motion, please.
Well, I will move approval of Resolution seventeen ten. Uh, Resolution amending Resolution zero seven dash fifty-seven regarding the city of Waverly's economic development assistance strategy within an urban renewal district utilizing tax increment, increment financing.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. No. Council discussion.
As was indicated, I think this document's been in front of us a couple of times over the last two years or so and I think the commission has done a good job of trying to take the feedback that has come from the council in the past about having something a little more black and white, um, a little more understandable when it gets into the, the percentages, the assistance that, uh, the council would be willing to look at, those type of things. So, uh, I, I think they put a, the right amount of work into it, the right amount of discussion and what I find interesting is if you take the, the document that was handed out here tonight and look back at some of the incentives that we've done with other companies, other situations, it mirrors it very closely. Um, but I think it's, it's got a track record that has been proven successful for us. This gives us the flexibility to, to work with just about any type of business that's coming to town and, and see what they're going to bring to the town, as Bill said, in, in jobs and buildings and whatever and, and find a good way to assist if it seems appropriate, so.
For the public councilman, Mackenzie is liaison to the council, to that commission. Other discussion?
My question is, might have to do with, um, the jobs equivalent and, and what happens if we bring a company in, we give them these incentives, they start to hire and then it falls off? What is, you know, are we tied into where they've created to this point or where they're at, you know?
What we tend to do with our development agreements is actually identify the number of jobs and how long we want them to sustain. If we pay, um, a, a, we usually tie it to the number of years we're paying incentives. And so if we do a five-year incentive, which I think we're, we're looking at doing in the, the present situation we're negotiating, it would be a five-year tie to a certain number of jobs at a certain level.
Yeah.
So they wouldn't be able to, they'd have to show that they had those numbers of jobs at that, um, at that pay level. And before, we kind of identified what the dollar amount was, which allows us now, allows us to tie into the state's definition of, um, high-quality jobs.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to focus on because that may, that will be changed every year or not necessarily changed every year, but it could change every year, uh, given that they change those programs. And, um, I think that's a better way of defining it because that make it, it's a more statewide consistent type of thing too.
So to follow up on Tim's question, what's the, excuse me, what's the consequence if, uh, you have an understanding that covers five years and they, they only meet it for three?
Uh, we don't pay them the last two. Uh, we can actually, and, and the council on our development agreements now has, the last, uh, two that we did or last one that we did, um, now have, has a provision that has to be, um, annually approved for payment and allows you to say no for a variety of reasons, including that you don't have the money or you don't want to do it or you don't have the, um, they don't have the jobs. And that, we don't like to use the first two reasons because we think once we make a commitment to a company that we should pay those if it's at all possible, uh, to make those payments. And that's why we generally tie it to tax increment financing because that way we generate the funds that are necessary to pay the incentive. That doesn't say that if things went down and, and valuations were horrible that, and we didn't have any increment, that, that wouldn't change things. But generally, that doesn't happen.
Other discussion? Let me thank the commission for their hard work. A lot of time was put into this and many meetings. Public input. Roll call vote?
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein. Yes.
Cengis.
Yes.
Resolution seventeen dash ten unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is to amend the water rates for the next two years for incurred costs during the Bremer Avenue reconstruction. Uh, this has had major time, major discussion already during the budget meetings. However, a quick overview by our city administrator might be helpful for the public as well as all of us.
Yes, sir. Um, we are proposing to increase the, uh, water rates by 5% for the next two years. The sole purpose of that is the Bremer Avenue Water Main Project that's coming on. Um, I know Mike can provide more detail than I can in this, but, uh, we have 2.6 miles, I believe, of new water main that will be put in. Uh, costs about 1.6 million and our goal in doing this would be to pay for a large portion of this when the debt is taken out to accomplish this project instead of borrowing it and then using taxes to pay it back or some other method. Uh, a lot of the logic is we talked about during the budget and everyone, of course, was here for that, so for the public's knowledge, um, when we look across the city, there are a lot of entities that don't pay taxes. And so is our belief that the most efficient way to, uh, have buy-in from everyone that utilizes the system is through water rates, whether it be the college, hospital, city, county, schools, churches, nonprofits, there is a significant portion of usage on this system that again is not supported by taxes. So to tax for this or borrow debt solely with taxes being utilized to pay it back, it would put in our feeling more of a burden on the people that do pay taxes versus the entities that don't, that do not have to then contribute to the project. So that is the justification for why we are looking at the increase for the next two years. And then after that point, we would then again go back to looking at what do we need to go forward, uh, without that project in place, uh, depending on any future projects. So it's a very short, long answer for what you've asked.
No, that was a very helpful answer and I think we're talking from 2.5%, which we've kind of had as our norm in recent time and, and we're still talking somewhat moderate to 5%, correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, the amendment memo that was, um, covered that Mike did a very good job in preventing or, I can speak, providing for us, um, would show that you're on average, you're using about 600 cubic feet per month. It would be about a dollar 20, a dollar 26 a month extra is what it would end up being for the increase per year. So.
Again, for the public, huge conversation on this in previous budget sessions, but I do want that briefing and thank you very much. Formal motion, please.
I would move the first reading of Ordinance 1020 and Ordinance amending the water rates charges a minimum rate for fiscal years 2017, 18, 2018, 19.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Uh, council discussion.
I think it would just be important to add, and we've talked about this before and it's implicit, I think, James, in what you said, but that, that after the, those two years, then we would go back and critically evaluate where we are and, uh, you know, decide what the rate is at that point in time. So it's not, uh, necessarily, it's, it's not at all meant to be sort of a precedent-setting rate, uh, that, that goes into the future necessarily, beyond those two years.
And, and would it be fair then to, to say that we anticipate or at least hope that we would be able to go back to two and a half after the, after the second year?
Um, I would hope that we would do a diligent review and it may be two and a half, it may be less, it may be a little more. We would know at that time, depending on how the project finishes, uh, what the need would be to move forward. And, and so it's really hard to say at this time, this early, but, uh, that would be our goal to review that and, uh, and then determine at that time. But yes, I would not anticipate it would stay at the 5%, obviously. It may be less. Uh, we would again have to see where we are if there's additional projects coming on or how this project itself finishes out. But, uh, that is the intent, sir.
And I don't know that it was necessarily stated on Saturday when we went through this, but again, traditionally we see about a two and a half percent increase year in, year out type thing. So we're really just talking about a two and a half percent increase to help cover the water extension above what our normal operational needs are from year to year. Again, that's by the way I'm looking at it maybe.
Yeah, I can see that point. We, we have ran about two and We have ran about two-and-a-half percent for ten, ten years, about ten, last ten years to maintain. You know, part of the other issue we look at is when you go to borrow debt, you go to the bond market, your rating agencies want you to carry a certain fund balance, or they will penalize you with extra interest charges. So some of that is also to maintain that fund balance, so we are liquid and we go to get rated. And then also look at any repairs that are needed, have money in case of emergencies, things like that. And so we've been very diligent in carrying that fund balance at the time. And so, yes, is above and beyond, is to then help offset the debt that may be incurred with this project, or do you soften the amount of debt we would have to borrow as this goes forward? So that is, in a sense, kind of what that five percent would be made of.
I had talked with you briefly after the meeting on Saturday, and it just had an idea that I don't, I mean, I doubt you probably have had a whole lot of time to look at it yet, but the thought was, since we're looking at raising this for, specifically paying for this extension or the replacement, is there a way to, instead of tacking in on the percentage rate, add just a simple flat fee that can be removed after the water mains been, the project's been done? I know Councilman Lampy talked a little bit on Saturday about kind of the compounding interest of five percent and then five percent on top of that, and then half on top of that, if we were to continue. Whereas maybe we can do two and a half and then add a fee for a couple of years and then be able to pull that fee back, and we haven't added any compound to the interest. I don't know if that's even doable within state code, if that sort of a thing is there, or even if you've had a chance to look at that as a, as a thought.
I think it's possible. I do know it would be probably for the period of ten years, though, if we did something along that line to pay down the debt of a ten-year bond, so that could be put into place. I apologize, I don't off the top of my head how that would occur. I do know there are a number of cities that have something like that as a standard operation going forward. And that's why when we compare a lot of rates, and I know we like to do that, we like to compare rates with other cities and how we sit, there are a number of cities that don't utilize only their rates the way we do to pay for a lot of things. They use other side rates that aren't included, whether it be storm fees, other utility rates, and so it's hard to make that comparison. But I do think it's possible, we can certainly look into that. As councilors aware, this is only one of three readings that needs to happen for this to even become enacted. The next one would be the twentieth, and then March sixth, the day of the budget, be the third one. In between time, we can absolutely look at that possibility and get back to you to see what that would take, or what the fee may need to be generated to accomplish that. But we certainly can do that.
Be curious just to see maybe what it would look like, because then people would know, okay, this fee is specifically for paying for this water main. And I think we can justify, we need the new water main through, through Bremer, and it benefits the entire town from fire safety, et cetera. Just, and makes a lot more sense to do it now rather than tear up the street individually to replace it if there are breaks of the old system. But it might also kind of offset, lay some of those fears that people might concern of, of just adding on top of each other, so.
Yes, sir.
And kind of the same comment for the next, next one, knowing that we have that big project coming for the, for the sludge facility to, to deal with that.
We'll look into that and try and report back to you by the next meeting.
Wouldn't the estimated amount, though, that we're talking about needing for this, in the end, be the same amount regardless of how we get there? So are you saying, Tim, that it might be easier to explain with a fee-based structure rather than a water rate increase structure?
You know, when I'm talking, when you're talking, we add five percent to the rate, and the next year, we're adding five percent to that, five percent added. And then the following year, we add whatever percent to that.
Right.
That's the compounding where it starts, that starts to really add up versus we add two-and-a-half percent to the rate this year, which is not as much as the five percent. But we add a fee on it, and that fee, that fee just kind of sits on top of it, all those other raises, and then once it's paid off, that fee is gone, and then those other rates are the same.
But I guess, well, maybe I'm missing something.
You're raising the same amount of money.
You're raising the same amount of money, yeah.
But it's, it's not compounding that fee long-term. I don't, I mean, that's why, I'd be curious to see what it would look like.
Yeah, but after two years, we, if we don't come back to adding anything on to the five percent, then we're not compounding any longer, right? I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
It's still there, it's just that five percent is just going to stay there unless we roll it back a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to look into that would might be helpful, I think, sounds like small numbers, but we'll see.
And for the public that didn't watch on Saturday, or didn't watch all the way through, I don't know why you wouldn't, it was four hours. Mike had a, had a note from the courier on kind of the comparison of water rates, and I don't know if anybody wants to put that up, just so they can see that now. Can we put that on the overhead for the, for the public at home? Just kind of showing that where Waverly sits kind of in the middle of, of some statewide rates there. And as, as James noted, this is only for water and sewer rates, whereas some of the cities on here that are much lower than us, Waterloo in particular is listed as the lowest one on there, but we know that they're going through some things where they're going to have to do nine, ten percent rate increases here. Plus, they also have a stormwater utility that's not included in this total, so to compare, you know, we're not quite comparing apples to apples on it. We are comparing just plain water and sewer rates, but there are other things. We do not have a stormwater utility to pay for additional things.
Oh, that's correct. And if you look at the chart, the cities are much less than Waverly. There's only maybe one that's even comparable in size, and that would be Carroll. Newton's the other one, close at about fifteen thousand, we're at about ten, so otherwise, most of the cities on here are significantly larger than the city of Waverly.
Or if you look at the ones that are similar, I mean, Storm Lake or Pella.
Of course, they are more than, so again, I'm not a huge fan of comparisons. I truly want us to be who we are and then move forward in our best result, but I know people like to see a lot of comparisons, and they want to see how we stack up. So by all means, we can certainly look at these, but I truly want us to be compared to, not comparing of with others, and that's how I present it.
That's a good point, and we want to be the leaders.
Absolutely.
Also, we have a philosophy that we don't know other towns have, and that is to stay steady and not go according to the fluctuation of demand. So that we're raising ten percent and then coming down to two, and then up to six, and then down to three. We've stayed steady, and it does make for, I think, better government.
Just kind of expanding on a theme that Tim threw out. Again, some folks may look at this, why should I have to pay for water mains on Main Street if I live in another part of town? But this truly does help other than just the folks that tie into it right there. It makes a stronger system all the way around. Allow some areas in town that have weaker fire hydrant systems to have more water flow for emergencies, those type of things. So it truly is a project that will benefit the whole community, not just the Main Street corridor.
Thank you. More council discussion. Public input. Roll call vote, please.
Is Dave still on it?
Dave? David, did you want to weigh in on that one?
He was buying.
He just, he just said no. For the public, we had, Councilman Resonance check has been on, on phone, which.
I think he'd be answering, right?
But I don't know if he's still with us.
He says there was a delay between the, between what he was hearing on.
Okay.
You can jump in anytime here, David, we're looking for you if you need to say anything on this. But jump in anytime during public comments, public comments on this water rate. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Ordinance ten twenty on the first reading unanimously approved. Regular business item number four involves amending our sewer rates, not our water rates, for the next two years as well. This is the same discussion, a motion, please.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance ten twenty-one, an ordinance amending sewer rates, charges and minimum rate for fiscal years twenty seventeen, eighteen, and twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion seconded. Council discussion, anything you want to add?
This one is for the treatment facility as opposed to the water main.
Yes, sir. It's about a nine-million-dollar project. Mike can shed a little more light on it, what we're looking at, proposing to do. The increase here on six-hundred cubic feet would be a dollar forty-four to a dollar fifty-six a month, depending. And so we are looking at a project much smaller than some cities are currently facing, and that's why they're having more substantial increases than this. But I'll let Mike kind of go forward with what he's showing on the projector there as a kind of a model of what we're looking at doing.
So back in November, we had a council review with our nutrient reduction strategy, and that, you know, these are regulations that are coming down from the feds and the state that we, we need to be able to address. Our engineering firm indicated that there was probably about eighty-eight communities within the state of Iowa that were going to be in this situation. We are very fortunate in the respect that we have a thirty-eight-year-old facility that was put in operation nineteen eighty. And these two structures right here are the trickling filters, and they are very rapidly nearing the end of their useful life. They need to be replaced regardless of what nutrient reduction strategy is being, coming, coming down from the feds and the state. I want to make that very clear. So we are very fortunate that we've been able to squeeze every year of life out of our system. Industry standard is that these are, have a thirty-year design life, and we will be pushing forty years with them. Think of it kind of like you buy forty-thousand-mile tires. If you're driving down the interstate and you maintain your car well, you're going to get at least forty thousand, if not a little bit more. But if you're hard on them, doing a lot of in-town driving, they're not going to last forty thousand. So just like with car tires, they estimated that these trickling filters had about thirty-year design life. Back in two thousand and ten, they, when they were thirty years old, we started scrutinizing them, taking a closer look. Two thousand and thirteen, we did an in-depth study on the condition and the remaining life. So just the need to replace these is like a nine-million-dollar project. We're able to not only replace them, but we're also at a time where we've maximized the useful life. And the replacement system will be an oxidation ditch, which also allows us to meet the new state and federal guidelines. Not only what's happening today, but we also estimate what may be coming at us to improve the water quality, as well as to build a facility that will accommodate the continued growth of our community.
So Mike, you're saying the new oxidation ditch will replace the trickling filters?
That's correct.
And what happens to the trickling filters, that they stay there, are you going to take them out?
They will be demolished, and the site will be cleared for additional projects that we may have to take in the future.
More discussion. Again, this is first reading.
We've got a number of students in the audience, and this is the fun kind of stuff we get to talk about on council.
I saw the back row was kind of fading out there, yeah. We thank you for your riveted attention to detail here. However, your, your adult, adults in your life, yeah, are also interested in, in these rates because it's our tax-paying public at stake here, and they want to be well-served, and hopefully this will well-serve them, but at a little extra cost. Public input. Student input. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
First reading of ordinance ten twenty-one unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is CMI's request, request to sponsor their application to IEDA, Iowa Economic Development Authority, for financial incentives. This is something that doesn't cost us, but we better be briefed on this. A little bit of help on this one.
We'll let Bill go ahead and run through this, he's had the work for this project, so.
Thank you, Bill.
It will eventually cost us some, but right now, we're asking for the council's approval of the sponsorship of the application. And what IEDA requires is that local government agencies or local groups support a project on a local basis. So a county might do it, a private development corporation might do it, or a city might do it. And what that, what that means is that CMI is coming to town to create jobs and to actually improve that facility and to make it manufacture things. And in doing so, they're going to be hiring from this area. And this area means that they won't be bringing in people that already have skills in their plants. They will be training them here on the ground in Waverly. And that means that the High Quality Jobs Act in Iowa will be very important for them because there are a lot of benefits out there that the state has been putting forward, to working with the community colleges in order to promote training dollars to go to these companies that are bringing jobs into Iowa. And so we want to make sure that we support that application that's coming. This is all going pretty quickly because CMI, this came faster than they expected because this building became available to them. They are actually a little frustrated because they have to wait till the seventeenth of February in order to hire people, because they have to wait till the board meets at IEDA. So we're doing all these things step by step in order to get them to the right place, so that after the seventeenth, they can start making offers to people and hiring some people. We will, we will sponsor the app as of the resolution that's today. That goes to the state. Their application is already in and being considered by the, by the IEDA staff. And then they will present it to the board on the seventeenth. The board will be voting on a particular proposal that the staff has created for the board, including financial incentives for the, for CMI. We're, at a local level, they'll be asking us for some local match, but it's tied to the amount of money that we can expect to accumulate by virtue of their, increasing the value of their property here. And so that will be happening in the next year. And with that increase, we'll be able to fund some incentive, and the state usually expects less than fifty percent of this incentive you might, or the increment that you might collect to be paid out as an incentive. So it's a net win for the company and a net win for the, for the local city. So that's what we're asking today, is merely signing the, the application form, and then we'll be coming back on the twentieth, I think, is for, for the, the local match. And that will have a development agreement that will require a certain number of jobs at a certain level for a certain period of time. And just to be pointing this out, the, the state also requires benefit packages that meet certain criteria. And CMI has been very strong on moving forward with a change to theirs, so that they'll comply with that program, and we're glad that they're doing that.
Great update, and obviously a lot of momentum on this one, and this is one of these feel-good transactions in Waverly. Let's do a formal motion.
I will move approval of Resolution seventeen eleven, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign CMI Road Building, Inc. application to IEDA for financial incentives as a local sponsor.
Second, please.
Second.
Council discussion.
So to be clear, I mean, even though this is just signing support for an application, it does commit us to some sharing of costs?
Yes, I believe it does. The state, if, if they were to find that we were unable to provide a local incentive, may still provide some benefits, but it may not be the same level if the, if the local city is. still provide some benefits, but it may not be the same level if the local city is not contributing a share that they think that the local community should share.
And on the 20th is when you're going to share more details with us about what that might look like.
We will have the exact details. We have some proposed things, but obviously I'm meeting with IEDA this week and then they're meeting with their board, the board is meeting next week to make those final decisions.
The proposal sounds like a no-brainer to me, but I just want to say once again that I think that we owe you and your team some appreciation for bringing this to bear. This is good news for the city.
We affirmed that before, but I think with all of our students here, we need some student participation for this great transactions of CMI's purchase of Tarex and our team having led the way. Let us all applaud. Thank you, students. Public input. Roll call, public, yes.
Hi, Dennis Hanson with the Airport Commission.
Yes.
I was just curious if CMI had expressed what their needs for the airport might be, if they have any.
We have been discussing this privately. They have come to us very interested in the airport, but to flush that out is a step I think that our city administrator will be looking into. But excellent question, yes. But they have expressed interest, strong interest in the airport.
Yeah, I know those types of companies like Winnebago and others have corporate aircraft that they use to facilitate their businesses and I was just curious.
I don't know the CMI will make a lot of use of it because most of their people will be from here and they will not have a lot of people coming and going that way. They did have somebody here that they flew in with at one point and he was quite concerned about the shortness of the runway and how difficult it was to stop and start and get off. But I don't know that it's going to be a major contribution to the airport at this point.
Good, thank you.
So somewhere in between there. More public, thank you, Dennis. More public input. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Resolution 17-11 is unanimously approved. We have before us several minutes. We have Planning and Zoning Commission minutes for January 5th. Any comments officially received? Waverly Historic Preservation Commission minutes for October 27th. Any comments officially received? The same commission for November 28th. Comments officially received? The W's advisory minutes for January 10th. Comments officially received? Economic Development Commission minutes for January 10th. Comments officially received? Library Board minutes for January 17th officially received? Leisure Service Commission minutes for January 19th officially received? And the senior center calendar for February. Any comments on that officially received? Any staff comments this evening?
It's always a question, isn't it? Staff comments. I would like Rich to at least mention the Citizen Academy coming up from his department.
So our application deadline ceased on Friday. We do have 12 applicants, which was our max. And so we will have a full class again for our eighth annual Citizens Police Academy. It'll start Thursday, February 16th and it'll be a 10-week program. So we'll have 10 citizens from Waverly going through that program. So hopefully in 12 weeks from now, we'll come by and have you visit them. They usually come for council meeting the week after their graduation. So looking forward to it.
Well attended, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. I think that's all we have, sir.
Okay. City council comments?
I don't have any, Mayor.
On this side?
I was just going to ask, Mike, I've seen some reports in Waterloo with their recycling that for the last month or two, they've been collecting recycling, but their place that they take their recycling to has been closed, so they've just been throwing it in with the rest of their garbage. There was some talk about people wanting refunds down there and they're saying, no, we're still collecting it or just recycling it like you thought we were. Are we caught in that scenario as well or how are we?
Yes and no. Their vendor is.
Be right in the mic so Ron can hear.
Their vendor is the same as ours, but we have found another outlet for us. We are currently taking ours to a vendor up in Charles City.
Very good.
Does that cost a spore, Mike?
It's about the same.
Well, I'm always impressed when students show up at city council meetings and appear to stay awake through the whole thing. And I'm just curious if there's anybody among the students who'd be willing to be a spokesperson to come up to the mic and tell us who you are and how you ended up at city council tonight? Or are you all going to be shy?
Designate the mayor.
Whoever's smiling the most must come forward.
I think there are different age groups here.
And, yes.
Here we go. All right.
One brave soul.
My name's Ella Canny and I'm here because we have to come here and get.
We are too.
So we're doing a project in family consumer science where we have to come, like go around our community and get 10 hours of community service. And this counts as four points slash hours. So we all come here. It really fills up slots.
You can tell your friends you picked the right council meeting. We're pretty much done at just over an hour and we've known to go close to three sometimes.
Thank you very much.
And we would appreciate it if you'd report back to school that you had a good time here.
The only, just confirming, we are meeting a week from tonight to kind of wrap up budgets and.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, 7 o'clock.
We should give a round of applause to the students and for.
You don't applaud, we applaud.
Applause for coming in.
That completes, and the mayor has no comments for tonight.
Motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Adjourn.